Podcast may be viewed on page four of the Louisiana Louisiana website. We're going to have the implication by Councilman Green, if there's a reason why.
Lawrence, we come once again to work for the development of our community and our city and our state. We ask that you give us guiding minds and leading hearts to work together to bring this community together for the good of all. These in your son's name we ask, amen?
Amen.
We can take the flag.
I'm glad we can secure the flag of the highest space of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with its injustice for all.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
And so, here, Mr. Gray.
President.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Lawren.
Here.
And Barry, here, I would like to ask one question. The people of the main stadium on the red and green, you know, being wearing twenty-eight, twenty-nine, in motion?
On my second.
Next, that's it. It's okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Powell and a second by Councilman Green and do. Mr. White, is this the one who wants to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the only thing, uh, my name is Mr. Cornelius Lawson White Jr., thirty-six, thirty-eight, Tenth Street in Alexandria, Louisiana, seven-one, three-oh-two. Uh, phone number is area code three-one-eight, four-four-six, six-nine-three-four. At the last city council meeting, the, uh, two gentlemen from the city never did come up here. So that was a discrepancy. I know you didn't know about it because you were just starting this with your second meeting. But it would be good because I believe you're supposed to be up here at the podium and be on the record if I understand it correctly. And, uh, I noticed that discrepancy is that those, uh, city workers weren't up here at the podium. They just took questions from right there at their seats.
So you would like for them to come to the podium when you're?
They should because it would be on the record.
Yes, sir. Well, we can do that.
And, um, I asked you last time because you being the first African-American and then being, uh, black history.
Mr. White, you want to talk about this? Not at this time, okay? But I appreciate what you want to say.
Wait, 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 wait. So you say I can't speak about something about? No, but it's about the minutes. What I'm asking is that I don't want to get beat down like. I know, I'm just saying, just get me out. I'm not beating you out.
Hold on just a second. Last week you say we wasn't going to fight. We're not going to fight up here.
Okay.
All I'm doing is you're going to respect me and I'm going to respect you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with the minutes. So if there's something else that you need to talk about that was pertaining to the approval of the minutes, you're more than welcome to do that. That way, hold on, let me say one more thing.
All right.
And I'm not going to tell you how to speak, but that coming up here with that beaten down, I'm beaten down, I got beaten down. We got to move past that.
Well, I can't move past that. I've been wearing the same clothes for the last two years. I don't know who's behind that.
Mr. White.
And I'm going to the doctor, the bar, to see about that. But that's what I'm trying to say.
But hold on.
But see, you look at him and he tells y'all what to say.
Mr. White, we want to control this meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
We want to respect each other, so.
Well, I don't want to get down there no more like I said, I have.
Okay, you can have a seat, Mr. White. I'm up there. I'm off it. How about you just have a seat?
Well, let me ask you something. One more question. One more question. So you say I can't ask you a question?
What is, what is the question?
The question is, years ago, you had freedom of speech in this.
No, sir, Mr. White.
No, we didn't have freedom of speech.
This is not what this meeting is about. This is not what this, I am going to, so I'm at no service.
Can I ask or vote for freedom of speech?
Mr. White, I'm asking you to act with your respect. And this is how we're going to do it. So your time is up and I'm going to ask you to have.
My time is up. Did the buzzer go on?
Your time is up because you're not talking to what is contained on the island.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Now my time is up. Thank you, ma'am.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
F, resolution, number one, resolution to request the proposal for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five standing party.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second, please.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Councilman Powell, a second by Councilman Walters. Any public comments? Discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number two, resolution authorizing advertising for the construction and maintenance materials.
Motion, please.
Move.
Savings? Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman John. Comments? Discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number three, resolution setting a public hearing to be held on March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, taking action on the cost of demolition of one commercial structure.
Motion, please.
Move. Second.
You're going to time it out now.
I'll go first then.
Uh, motion by Councilman Powell, a second by Councilman Malloy. Public comments? Discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number four, resolution setting a public hearing to be held on March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, to consider combination of twenty-five structures within the city.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Powell, public.
We'll go ahead until we get to the discussion.
Okay, public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Good evening. Um, did you make it? I did have a bunch. I don't blame you, but I have it. But I needed to speak about this. I'm just wanting to give honor to the mayor's administration and all of the council members. I'm just Sandra Auguste, just a citizen concerned. I'm so thankful that we're getting these twenty-five structures torn down. But I do want to make mention again about the structure that I've had on the list for about ten years at the corner of Kelly and, um, Sixteenth Street. Um, it belongs to Kinder. It's been there and it's just deplorable. I'm, and I've told, I'm just, I'm just wondering why it's not being on the list. I don't care if he tears it down. He don't have to. He can just move it and put it to where his neighborhood is. Because it's just been there for homeless people to just lure the neighborhood, coming in and out of there, doing their drugs, falling out on the street right by my house. I'm just wondering why it's taking so long for that structure. Thank you for all you do.
So we need discussion?
I did speak with Mr. Richard Johnson, the director of planning. He would like this, uh, island to be amended to March eleven. Or we propose this amendment. Still move?
What was it made of to?
March eleven.
Oh, it's a March eleven.
It's the motion I've been here on. The first motion was to move by.
Move.
By Mr. Malloy.
I'll pull.
Second motion was to move by. Mr. Powell.
I'll pull my motion.
You will drop?
Richard, you find.
So we need to vote on?
Right, to amend it to a marchy later.
Correct. Second.
Second. I think that motion.
Move.
You can vote.
Yeah, I do. Motion, second.
Move. Yeah, just, okay.
I'm ready.
All ready. Okay, any opposed?
Motion, we need to make a motion and second is a minute.
Okay.
Still move?
Second.
There's some discussion we have about that. Do you have a chance?
Yes, yes.
But, ma'am. How long does it take for the administration to get these twenty-five structures in line to be?
Be very long. I mean, if you tell me ahead of time we could get these acts for each of them, I don't, I don't, is that even less the structure, so.
Okay, well, I guess.
This is just a set of hearing on the structure.
Okay, I'm standing, I'm all for it. Um, what's the, did you give me the average cost before per structure of this, this all part?
Again, different for every structure. Different for every structure. The average would have no meaning to us because there's so here, commercial building versus a small house or.
I guess there's, yeah, there's a debate and that there's lots of issues, but if you have a set of questions, we'll, I can answer any of them. Okay, well, I'll answer some questions from the. All right, thank you. You're welcome.
I'm good.
Mr. Lloyd. All in favor? Motion, please.
Number five, resolution authorizing advertising for the needs of children's facilities.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments? Discussion, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
She, motions for final adoption, that they tip up here. Number six, to consider final adoption of a court of the resident mayor to accept the little bits submitted to the entire lease, so I hate training.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Lawren, public comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number seven, to consider final adoption of a court of the resident mayor to renew the existing contract with janitorial, cleaning, staffing, eligibility for janitorial services of a waste or in-loud testing building.
Okay.
Second.
You're going to time out.
Motion by Councilman Lawren, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments? Discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number eight, to consider final adoption of the ordinance authorized by the resident mayor to accept the little bits above you. But we get this equipment introduced by various departments.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Powell, second by Councilman Malloy. Public comments? Discussion?
Yes, see where, um, administration received, oh, four councilmen has received a mail from the court and all company that works over the council that, um, purchasing reviewed, uh, each response. And then, uh, after their review, it was determined that trolling traders, um, the lowest, uh, response and legally renewed all of the responses and determined that because of their point two-nine-four-one average score that they were the lowest responsible, responsive, uh, they were subject to such a bad problem that it'd be impacted. So I just wanted to clarify that as I think we all have any questions about the.
Uh, just for my, for my knowledge. So, I have a lot of news, but I was like, yes, but holy cars and, uh, fire trucks. We have a third place to set up and we can go, go pick it up. There's a big, big tanker.
Okay, so we have a fielding farm. It's located at the city compound.
Okay. I guess when they get loaded, they don't find us. We just go in for nothing. Being in a bullet, but it's just a one bit for you. How, how does it work?
Good evening, um, Elena. So, um, the deliveries are to the compound at those viewing stations and at two other delivery points as well. So whenever, um, motor pool actually keeps track of that, so whenever it is low, we put it under the order and then they will come and refill it. It's very similar to a gas station that, uh, you go to like a Chevron or something. So this is for a year, so we'll have that pricing in place for a year.
Okay.
So as soon as it gets low, they're notified, they come in, they refuel, and then everything carries on as normal.
Just like a motor.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is.
It looks exactly like what you say. In fact, it looks like a nice gas station, islands and all.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number nine, to consider final adoption of a court of the resident mayor to accept the little bits submitted to the state why flood control, captain improvement project of Augusta Avenue background, machine shop.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman, um, public comments, Mr. White?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. On this, I believe, uh, Mayor Hall started with this project and the governor, then John Bell Edwards, uh, to get this money for flood mitigation for the lower third area where I live at, Tenth and Augusta. And, um, it's about time this be fixed because that backwater, like the mayor pointed out, once they get to the Volks Parish, they block the water off so it doesn't go into their fields and everything. And now we want to divert it toward the Red River. So, you know, all them homes over there don't get flooded. None of that is true.
It's not a Jeff Hall project. It's a me project. It's Europe to say. So you're saying Jeff Hall didn't get any money?
This is not the project he's talking about. It's a completely different project.
Oh, it's a different, the project he's talking about is the Chaplain Outfall.
That chaplain.
It's why you can mail your project.
Yes, please. I would like to hear it. So the project is here, this project is the Augusta Street project, uh, Charles's house that we talked about. The Chaplain Outfall project also starting in my administration. It carried through Jeff's administration, is now back. It's taken that many years and we talked about that. This is not that project. This is the Augusta Street project to add generation, uh, generators to pumping stations that are right on that outside where on Augusta, uh, in that area in Fourteenth, you have those houses that are just in that several block area that are still, uh, able and in the right range to take some, some serious water. Mostly John Street in that area that's been corrected over the years. As you know, and it's raised up and doing that area has still, it can be personal about it, but he's in the building, uh, in his house and in the building next door where there are several dew places go all the way up to, uh, uh, Willa Land. But we still have some, some major issues. Back in that, in the huge flood in Gustav, uh, all of that was, we had trucks going through and we're having to pull people from those homes. So this will, this will pull as much water as we can. Something to it's still being this, uh, parry low as you know, just, so it's not just to get the water out as fast as you can. It's also how low that is in terms of a low base flood output. I, this was a ninety-ten project with, um, money that we received from the Louisiana Watershed Initiative and, uh, I believe it remained ninety-ten. So two million dollars. It's, we're, we're doing really well with this from our expense versus state, so.
The, excuse me, Madam President. The pump on Tenth Street, is this included over? It's right on the.
This is adding new additional pumps and general backup generators to it.
Okay. Has that pump's last four years been replaced?
I don't know by hand, uh, what pump you're talking about. It's, uh, this is two new pumps generator.
Um, Tenth Street is behind Louis Roberts' house.
I think you're talking about what we call the pumping station.
Pet, Peton Street.
I'll get the answer for you.
Okay.
I don't know by heart if it's.
Okay, anyway, four years ago, I was sending you. Um, Mr. Gray, I know it's a gust, but you're moving all the water, the water is getting pumped and directed to the West End. Yeah. Everything is needed down that area. All right, I just, that was, I wanted to make sure, I was asking that question, sir. Thank you.
We call it pumping, but you're actually more correct. I mean, it's actually, pumping's the other side. We always, it's always been called that. But it's almost ten, a ten.
Uh, Mayor Lloyd, is this improvement a part of an overall? I guess what I'm trying to say is after this is done, they need other projected improvements.
Yes. So the Chaplain Outfall project would be the biggest, if you're thinking about an overall movement of water, uh, out of the city that we've discussed a few weeks ago and other time, but I'll give it to briefings and do it at least once a year for you guys. Just to remind you, there's, uh, several ways that water leave, leaves the city. But the majority, the vast majority, much more than sixty-five percent, maybe as much as, as eighty, at some point will enter into the Chaplain Outfall to, to leave the area. So if you think of all the different water diversion bodies, they end up roughly, that huge percent, over sixty-five percent ends up at the Chaplain and then all the way out, uh, into a Volks Parish, ultimately into where Bayou Cartable is, all the way in Fort Barrett, Louisiana, then to the Chaplain, then to the Gulf. Uh, Bayou Rapids has a piece that dumps into the river, but we much less deal with that. That's only in certain times of flood stage. That's not really drainage for the city. Uh, and then the one other big one would be the diversion canal that runs on the side of Menard and Windermere and goes out to the Bayou Buff area. Correct. And so that one goes out to Buff. Truly Buff way outside meets back up with that whole Chaplain flood plain. It all becomes one again. So the Chaplain, if you just think of that name, is really the water diversion system for Alexandria from a percentage standpoint. Even if it's not where it meets up right off of Hudson and all that you all know and see, it will ultimately meet up even in the Buff system way out and go all the way, as I said, to roughly Fort Barrett, Bayou Cartable, all that. So it's huge that it be able to be relieved. If you imagine all these other bodies are pouring into, whether it's, um, the Horseshoe Drainage Canal, Kinson, all of those are ultimately going into it. And the theory behind the Chaplain Outfall project, not the, it's the project, I'm sure what was actually talking about is that you would divert water and so it doesn't build up this in the city into the river before it has to do that. So right now Bayou Rapids can carry it to the river, but only if it's at a certain stage. It's not really super useful to us. Here you would have a project that could divert water before it bottlenecks, uh, right outside of, uh, uh, Hudson and all that. And you would have a chance to divert it soon. And so it is a big part of an overall project. And to further to answer your question, there are a system of projects that we're using, but I wanted you to picture ahead. It's, that's the way it's going. So when you hear of these larger projects, they're always trying to fit in that vector, if you will, in that line.
And this improvement, though, overall designed to prevent flooding, I guess, that was Gustav.
It is going to prevent backup, uh, you could not have prevented Gustav for the event probably in September that year because it's volumetric. It's the amount of rain and the, and the speed in which it falls. But yes, in theory, it could have helped in, in Gustav. You're right. Because Gustav was falling on saturated ground and it, in theory, if everything were pumped, had been pumped down or could have been, you know, you would have less. Uh, I don't think Gustav stops, but think of all the rains we apprehended by cleaning out and having better movement. Those would have made it in houses and gone nearly the percentage it used to. We're seeing a big, big improvement.
There's water that falls on our golf course, which is a hundred yards from Bayou Rapids, ends up in the Chaplain River.
Yeah, instead of, I, you know. So, uh, in Gustav, there are some weird rains, Mr. Lawren, where you, in theory, if, uh, one area was low enough, you could, what's called a back divert or a back channel the water and flow it, what's called a counterflow. You flow it the other way than design and you flow it, instead of it going out past Menard and all the way to the Bayou Buff area, you backflow it into Bayou Rapids and it could then divert to the Red River. And so, you know, those are, those have to be rains where either gravity or pumping helps you do that. And, but that's not the design. We, we have a system set up that's due because of Gustav where, um, a proper order from us, uh, Bayou, uh, Ram, the Red River Chaplain, Bayou Buff Levy District, will counterflow the water.
I'm good. Thank you, Madam President. After y'all finish this discussion, I do want to answer House of the Law's question about the demolition time. Just got a text from the planning department. Uh, it takes thirty days after the property is condemned by city council for homeless and activity to begin. Because we have to send those to street owners, the average residential demolition takes two to three days. Commercial structures will be five days to thirty days depending on the complexity. We have four rotating contractors on our list, which they're only able to give the twenty-five structures and models within thirty to forty-five days. And the date will be early May.
That's that dollar pay for it, Joe. And all the papers are notified the first time.
That's correct.
They, that's why I do all of them, they do that. Well, I got some more questions that people who still deal with that, it seems like we're not able to keep up. And why is it probably real good? Down where we were in the best we came, but it's, you know.
We're moving with the sense of urgency. That's why Mr. Johnson asked that it be moved up to. Thank you for speaking, Mr..
All in favor? Any opposed?
It's enough, you sure? Okay, I'm gonna have a very. Okay, yeah, Courtney, you feel a little tall. So hold on a second here. Let me, uh, let me raise it up a little bit. Tall, um. Is this that right in front of me? Or not, look? Hold on a second, Courtney. When I want to say. So you can come on in front. You can come on up, Courtney?
Yes.
No, you can come on up, man.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead. You, you got.
Jack, I just thought.
Go ahead and speak up as loud as you can.
Yes, sir. I just thought that the meeting, I thought we were going to have freedom of speech now. You know, and I wanted, I gave her this, a show, you know, to talk about what's going to be happening at the Rapids Parish. She said, oh, yeah, we'll talk, man. Never did talk.
Okay, so, so you're talking about some, uh, upcoming, uh.
Events at the Rapids Parish Library.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. All right.
On February the twenty-second, honor these black historical people.
Okay.
And, uh, nothing was said about it. And I asked to say if we were going to talk about it. I've asked to have freedom of speech in this council like they do across the river. We used to have freedom of speech when Ned Randolph was here.
Uh-huh.
And I don't understand it now. The woman that stood up, she didn't sign up for nothing. You're supposed to sign up to speak. So I'm going to bring that out the next.
You're talking about the lady that?
Yes.
That answered some questions?
Right. No, no, no. I'm talking about the lady that was about the resolutions, which I didn't think you could stand there for the.
Okay, well, you, Courtney, is everybody here, you, man? So.
Yeah, I just think that, um, I don't know why we can't get free.
I don't know why we can't get freedom of speech. And everybody looks at the mayor to say what you can say. That's wrong. You know? And, uh, Jack, I hope one day, like I said, I'm running either for the Alexandria mayor or at large or Bill Cassidy, you can listen and center. So I'm looking at all three.
Okay, so you're planning on running for election in the twenty-twenty-six, uh?
Yes, sir.
Campaign. And so, now which, what offices are you?
Looking at all three of them.
All three. So you're talking about?
Bill Cassidy is sitting.
The senator.
Alexandria City Mayor.
City man.
Alexandria City Lord.
City Lord. Okay, all right.
Because it's just not right. We've gotten change. We need more change. You need to be able, like I said, in Pineville and these other places, you have freedom of speech. We need to talk about this carbon capture business because it's going to poison our aquifers. We depend on those aquifers. Like I said, you can't get nothing. You gotta, we, we'll talk to you.
So you think carbon capture is going to impact the people here in the city of Alexandria?
Because we use Artesian wells. That's going to contaminate the wells if that.
So the wells you're talking about that is, uh, south of Alexandria?
Yes, sir.
Interesting.
So I hope and pray, uh, you'll get Chuck Owens on and we need to talk about it in the Rapid Parish Parish City Council. We need to talk about it here. Pineville, because we all depend on Artesian wells. We don't want to be like Flint, Michigan and have bottled water.
I hear you, I hear you. Well, I tell you what, Carnegie, is anything else you need to say before we shut this live down?
No, God bless you and thank you so much for.
All right, all right, man. Thank you.